You all know that I am recording this meeting. Yeah. If you don't like it, too bad. All right. Um, okay. I don't know what this is. Here, I don't know what that is. There we go. So anyway, thank you to Kevin Harrington, Dick Herron, and Steve entry senior for helping me out during the class. They they did a great job. You know, keeping everybody honest, mainly myself. And, um, you know, we had, we had, we had a good time and the class was really good. They had a lot of good questions. And, um, Okay, so the E board is going to meet in November. We haven't scheduled that meeting yet. And we're going to discuss any, we're going to discuss how we're going to be ready for next year. And we are going to discuss any new business that comes out of this meetings. This meeting here tonight. And then meetings for 2021, we will plan them. We will plan them as if we are going to be at the Elks. And we are going to do the six meetings for need to be required. That is currently the plan. That is, um, what we are going to target through. Okay. Well, let's welcome our newest members. Roberto Ayala, Corey Pomprey, and Jim Porter, Justin Giusti, Ben Yader, Nicholas Healy, Joey Bean, Matt Lozeritis, Dennis, and Braden Booth Desmaris. They all passed their test. They all passed their, uh, they all went through the class. They passed their test. We will install them at our first meeting in February. Just want to say welcome. Ben Yader is our first ever member of the junior program. So he will be getting a different patch. He won't be getting the NBA patch. Uh, and he will be able to work, um, the little league level and the, uh, lower level AAUs. The, the 12 and under AAU games. So I want to walk all of them. They were, they were a great bunch. Uh, we did have a very, very good time with them. And, um, and, um, it was, uh, they, they asked a lot of good questions. So hopefully we can get them on the, on the field soon. So welcome, guys. All right. The, the federation rule changes. We put you through the wringer last year and nothing ever came up. So, so what does that mean? It means absolutely nothing. So, um, the, the rule set is currently still on track to be ready to roll, um, in the spring. Whoever's not on mute, can you please go on mute? That sound is annoying. And the, and we're going to have you watch the presentation again. I'm going to put it to video. And I will share it with everyone. I'm not going to force you to do it again, guys. You did it all once last year. But it will be good, um, refresher for you guys in the sense of the rule changes. Specifically, the new DH rule, the courtesy runners. You know, the, the first to third pickoffs, all that. Just get in there, watch it, go through it. And again, if there's any questions, um, you know, ping myself. Ping Joe Hilton, our interpreter, and ping Richie, who was on the MIA committee for, for our board. That will be available in November. I haven't recorded it yet. I need to just put some time aside to, to get that and record, uh, record that. So, so that's what's happening with the, Federation rule changes. Okay, so, like I said, wasn't going to take up too much time, um, with updates because there aren't really a lot of them. I did want to introduce the, the new members to the class. We, we, you know, we did, we did it differently this year. We did a fall class because, um, most fall sports were canceled. So a lot of people had time on their hands. So, um, I, I took that opportunity to get that class and it worked well. So, um, we had about a five or six, um, pre-submitted questions. A couple of them were duplicated. So I, I took them out. Um, but you know, we, we will, we will, um, you know, we will go over, over it. If you feel I misinterpreted and I didn't include it, put your hand up, ask the question. And we'll, you know, we'll, we'll address it. So as I go through these, let me answer first. And then if anyone wants to make any comments or follow up questions, uh, please do so. Okay? So the first question is, will the hockey style catcher mask be enforced? Um, not quite sure I understand it, but I'm going to take a crack at this. If you mean the single piece catcher rule that Federation has, the answer is yes. If it's a rule in Federation, it is going to be enforced. Not sure why someone would think we wouldn't enforce it. And if it stems from something they saw during the fall, I mean, during the summer and the fall, you can wipe those out. Nobody used Federation during, during the summer and, and/or the fall. So the answer to that question, how I understand it is yes. Follow up to that? All right, moving right along. I hope. Okay. Damn computers. There we go. Want to go back and make sure I got it. Okay. If we are still in COVID next year, are the high schools and MIA aware of how things were handled this year in summer league play, which could lead to having high school games? I don't know. I, I don't. Um, I will say high schools were aware. I will say MIAA was aware. Um, if they're not, then their heads are in the sand. You know, logic doesn't really resound well with the MIAA. So if they watched how things were successful, it really doesn't mean anything. Their decisions have a lot more, um, factors. You know, I, I mentioned one earlier stating, um, school might not be in session. Um, so it wouldn't matter how successful, um, we were on the field during the summer. They still can't make that decision. So, so there is a lot of factors. I would like to see them kind of utilize how our local leagues manage things. Not entirely because some leagues were very loose with their rules and some leagues were very, were very strict with their rules. So they'll, they'll find a good mix on that. So, so I hope I answered that question. I mean, the real answer is, I don't know. Any follow up questions to that? Moving right along. Okay. What are the Fed rule adoption plans? I think, um, I think, I think I kind of answered that. We're going to put the presentation as a video, uh, leave it open for question and answers. We'll probably do a couple of check ins between now and, and the end of the year. Just to make sure we're, we're all set, just, you know, once we have a full understanding of what, uh, next season will look like. We can give you better on how we're going to handle things as they come. But we're going to try to get you ready again with the Federals. This year, we're going, obviously, we're not going to be as strict with making you watch it. You guys went through it last year. Nothing has changed. No new rule changes came in. So we, you know, we're just going to have you kind of figure it out on your own. I would, would recommend, um, um, re-watching that, uh, just so you can understand. So. Need follow ups to that? Will there be a high school refresher course in likely protocols? I think this is kind of the same question as the last, but I'm not sure. We'll get you ready for the high school season like we have, um, every other season. As we learn how they want to handle mechanics, um, how they want us to address certain areas, what we're going to have to wear in with regards to mask, no mask, behind the plate, behind the mound. As soon as we get that, we will cascade that down. You know, it's, it's extremely fluid. You know, we, we tried our best this summer to kind of keep you guys up to date. And, um, you know, guys did a great job. Everyone adjusted well. And you kind of took, took the advice some, and you know, we, we were changing. We were constantly changing because it was making sense. And, you know, when I was on the field and, and, you know, there were questions on mechanics, we'd talk about it. And then we would try something different if it, if it meant that we needed to. So, um, so with regards to this question, you know, like I said, we'll get you ready as, as we normally do. It's one of those, you know, I understand a lot of people haven't been on the field in a while. Some, we haven't done a high school game and it'll be almost two years before we do a high school game again. So I get the question and, you know, well, the, the best we can do in that scenario is, is just, um, press on and just be prepared. Follow up? Okay. Okay, this one's a long one and it's kind of all over the place. I'm going to read it. I'm going to try to answer it the best I can. There are leagues always looking for umpires. It would be beneficial for them to have an access to arbiter, but when inquiring, their request is denied. Is there a possibility that the WABUA could buy an arbiter account utilizing our dues to pay for it? They could then allow leagues to appoint a representative to access the site. It seems that paying $15 arbiter fee and not getting any games is unfair. Okay, so there's a lot of things going on in this question. So I'm going to break it down. Um, I don't know what they mean by leagues requests being denied. I don't understand it. So I'm going to just kind of tell you how it works. Leagues hire people to assign their games. Now, if that person is in an arbiter system, they will assign through arbiter. If they're not, they are not. You need to remember arbiter, the, the board does nothing with arbiter. That is not, that, that is not a board thing. So if a league is asking for arbiter access, they need to contact Rich Gattani because it's his, it's his system. So, uh, like I said, I don't fully understand what that part means. I'm just breaking down to you how it works. So I'll just move on to the next part. And whoever wrote this wants to clarify anything when I'm done, I am all, all for it. Is there a possibility that the WABUA could buy an arbiter account utilizing our dues to pay for it? Um, this, this is a, this question came in about four times, um, on this, on this, on that sheet. The answer to that is, I don't know. Um, because I, I don't spend freely. I, I don't have that power. Contrary to popular opinion, I, I don't make a ton of money on this. I don't make any money on this. So, so, so we will take it back. It has, so the way it's going to go, and we will take this action item, is I'm going to discuss it with the E board. The E board will have their discussion. We will make a recommendation. And then, then if the recommendation is to purchase an account, it has to go up to all of you. You, you have to agree for us to spend the money on it because it will be, it will be your dues that pay for it. Okay, so that, so I will take that action item. Um, Steve, jot that one down. We got to, we got to address that. And then they could then allow leagues to appoint, yeah, so that piece there, um, I'm not going to address because it goes with the account. This last piece, I'm not going to lie, not my problem. Okay, it's not, it's really not my problem. If you're paying for an arbiter fee, you're not getting a game, you need to deal with who you're paying the arbiter fee to. Now, on the flip side of that, is if you pay an arbiter fee and you're not available, and that's why you're not getting games. That's not the, that's not the assigner's fault either, because we have that issue. People get their fee, they go, they, they open up their arbiter and then they get a game and it gets kicked back. Okay, so that's, that's also part of the problem. So if you feel like you're not getting your money's worth through your arbiter fee, you either don't pay it, or you have that conversation with Richie. That's, that's how you handle that. That doesn't come to me. Like I said, now, if what we are going to discuss comes to fruition, that's a different scenario. But right now, that's not my problem. I, I hear it. I've heard it. It's not the first time I've heard it. And I, I think I've answered it. I've answered it the same time, every time. That is a discussion you need to have with the assigner. Okay? Do we have any follow up to this?
Yeah, Nicky, I got some questions on a lot of this.
Okay.
If you're counting on this year that they paid 15 bucks and didn't get any games, that's understandable. A lot of people didn't work. But if it's another year prior to this, and they didn't get any games, why not? Were they available or were they working in the league?
Well, I guess that's the question, Steve, right? It's, it's not something I monitor. It's not something you monitor. And to be quite honest, it might not be something Richie monitors. We need to, we, I mean, I wish I knew who, who wrote this piece here. But I, you know, I, I'm just curious to know. Because I know, and Steve, you know, and, and you know, and Richie can chime in. There are some days we're begging guys for games. So I'm sorry, um, if you didn't get a game.
You didn't update arbiter.
You didn't, well, that's not, that's not entirely true. You, you probably, you probably blocked yourself out. You probably did update arbiter and didn't want to work. Guys, I'm not, listen, I'm going to, I'm going to be straight up honest, and I've been extremely vocal on this. If you block the day, I'm not calling you to ask you if you want to work. That defeats the purpose of the system. Because I'll be honest, when I send out those APB emails, the people who get games are blocked. I, I don't get it. All right, so, so there needs to be more context into that $15. I agree with Steve. And whoever wrote this wants to shoot me a message off to the side. Again, I'm not, I'm not going to call you out. I, I need to fully understand what's happening. Because the way it's written, they're right. If they pay $15 and they don't get any games, that is, that isn't fair. It's, it's actually criminal. It's stealing.
Okay, here's something.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at this and say we let five other guys come in and sign. Okay, and they all assign their leagues. And now I'm looking for somebody to go to Burncoat and South. And they're all tied up doing AAUs or Little Leagues or Babe Ruths. And there's nobody available? I think we're a high school board, and if you let all these other people in, taking everybody that's available.
Well, we're, we're, we're getting way ahead of ourselves, Steve. Okay, this is, let's, let's have the discussion on it. Because we would need to set up ground rules that, that would prevent that, if that's the way we go. Yes, I agree. When we're assigning high school games, I don't want the Little League guys taking all of our high school guys and we can't fill a high school game. You know what? Because I'll say to them, grab two parents out of the fucking stands and put them in there. Okay, um, but again, we're, we're way ahead of ourselves on that, on that discussion.
And also what, what the arbiter does, suppose in one of our assigners assigns one, assigns me to a Little League game. Okay, and I refuse it. Now I'm not open for a varsity game.
Right. Again, we got to make ground rules. Got to have ground rules.
Yep.
I get that, but let's, we're, we're, we are so far down the road on that one. We, we need to scale it back because we haven't even agreed if we're going to do this yet. So let's, let's scale it back and we'll figure it out if we need to. At this point, there's nothing, there's nothing to discuss on it.
Some more headway into these questions here, this question.
Yeah, I honestly would like a little bit more clarity as, as to what, because there's a lot of, of comments being said here. And they're kind of all over the place. They're kind of like, you know, leagues are being denied access. Can we get our own system and I'm not getting any games? That, that all, that all kind of boiled into one question, which is fair. This person got writing and, you know, you know, they just kept going, right? It was like when the Germans bombed Pearl Harbor, right? Just let them go. I get that. Um, but, and, and I'm, and I'm being dead honest. Whoever wrote this question, and I know it's anonymous, ping me. I just need clarity. You're not in trouble. I'm not going to yell at you. I just need clarity. Because I need to understand what, what, what's happening that, you know, made you kind of go all over the place on this. Or if you want to, feel free to call it out now and go ahead. But if you, if you want to stay anonymous, then please, please ping me. Any other questions? On this?
Nick, quick question.
Yeah.
The $15, is that paid by, through our dues or do we pay an additional $15?
That's a separate fee. That is a separate fee.
Okay, so when would we get the link to pay that, to be able to put our profile into Arbiter?
We'll send, we'll send your names and emails off to, uh, to Rich Gattani and he'll, he'll set you up.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Don't pay Richie before the first of next year.
Yeah.
He'll try to get you for the last two months of this year.
He'll whack you, he'll whack you twice.
Yeah, I would say pro rate. I'd say Richie pro rate.
Yeah, so that is it for pre-submitted questions. I do see one hand up and it's a familiar hand, Jim.
Yeah, my only question was like, you know, with the rules that you guys are going to talk about on the E board, you, you know, definitely you should have your list of, you know, high school guys that are going to get scheduled first. You know, meaning you're more senior guys that shouldn't be doing any, any Little League games.
It's not a, it's not a senior thing. It's, it's an availability thing. Well, and that's what, I think that's what Steve's alluding to because what, what, what can happen is, Steve can game and, and the game goes from 3:30 to 5:30. And the Little League game is from 5:30 to 8:00.
Right.
And when we go to assign that, that person is unavailable because they can't, it's because they're, they're, no, they're, no, they'll be, they'll be assigned to a Little League game. So, you know, we all need to come up with ground rules. Because in, in all honesty, for me, if I was doing that, I would, I would totally, totally, um, yank that person onto the Little League game, especially if I was that desperate. Um, and I think that's part of the
Discussion.
Discussion we need to have and the ground rules we need to have with all the signers. So again, way, way ahead of ourselves. That is a, that is a discussion that the, the, uh, the E board needs to have first. And then if, and the E board may have to have it a couple of times. They, they may not even come to a, a, um,
A vote.
A decision right away, um, on that. And then once we send out recommendations, you know, we're, we're going to pull it to the, to the board. Yeah, so I think we're, I think we're a little, I think we're a little ahead of ourselves on this. You know, I'm going to be honest, the last thing I want to be is a, is an arbiter administrator. As president of this board, I have, I have enough shit to deal with. I like, I, I don't want to deal with arbiter. But, you know, I also, I also work at the behest of the membership. And this question came up, this question came up three times on the form. And I had it countless times during the season. You know, so, you know, having those during the season, you know, leads to believe that, you know, there, there is a call for it and they're, they're clamoring, they're clamoring for it. So I need to, I need to fully understand it. You know, like I said, the person who wrote it, and, and honestly, the, like I said, it came up several times. Ping me with your thoughts, ping me with your frustrations, just so I can present it. Because if it's just about us as a board getting an arbiter account, I'm not for that. But if it, if it's going to serve a, a purpose, then yeah. Because here's the thing, you guys struggle with arbiter the way it is now. If we bring in everybody and we bring in all the games into it, I'm going to start punching people. So it's, it's, you know, we have to be at a point where we need to fully understand what, what the question is.
How many potential leagues would be looking for access, if you don't mind me asking?
I don't know. I don't know. I, that's why I said I need more clarity on that question.
I like Tom's mask at the attendance of the meeting.
Kevin, you were late and I see you have your uniform on. Always late from a game. Jeez, where were you? North Pro again?
No, uh, West Pro. It was a prayer commitment, but it's nice to be here.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have any else that they want to discuss? Like I said, I don't want to take up too much of your time. And Kevin, you weren't here, so you made me forget to record. So the first portion of it is, is not available, but sorry. So the first portion of it is, is not available, but sorry. Be careful, you would have been here. Nobody has any other questions? I'm not gonna get 47 emails between now and, and our next meeting about stuff I didn't cover, right? I see Alex. I see Alex. All right, well, well, thank you, guys. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your commitment this year. Everyone did a great job. Especially those four guys who did the, the Little League championship there. You guys rocked it. All right, well, if nobody else has any other questions, we'll be talking. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.